Eighteenth meeting of the Lincoln City Planning Commission. All rise, please, and adjournments, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we call which? Gary Cunningham?
I'm here.
Dr. Price? Marie McFarlane?
Here.
Sean Keer?
Here.
Steve Griffith?
Here.
Miles Wessenter?
Here.
And Patty Crowell?
Here.
Any agenda changes or revisions?
I do need to add something under Agenda Item Number 10, on Number 2, addressing Tuesday, April 16th, 2019.
Okay. This is a work session, and I've been now told that if you want to address your commissioners, you do that during the formal public hearing process, and we're not having a public hearing tonight, so...
I'd just like to listen again.
Oh, yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so, welcome. Okay, we have the minutes from our March 5th meeting.
We accept the minutes as written from the March 5th meeting.
Second. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
In the post. Okay, any discussion of minutes? Good, all right. No final orders, resolutions, or written communications?
Um, no.
Okay, we don't have a public hearing tonight, can we hold business?
I know old business this evening.
All right, so we're down to Item 7, which is our new business. The first item is 7.1, which is the food cart, food truck work study. Yeah, so, Lindsay, you want to...
Yeah, so, it's directed by administration to begin the discussion of food carts, food trucks. It was identified during their, um, it was identified during their council priorities meeting a few weeks ago that as for economic development, they would be interested in the city allowing these types of uses throughout the city. Currently, the city has limited allowances for street vendors on public property. Those permits are done through the Parks Department.
Under Chapter 528, it's done through your department. For streets under the ordinance as amended, in parks, it's done through the Parks Department.
Okay, okay. So...
And can I ask, is that non-food street vendors? Is that specific?
It's, it's, there is no, well, it's, you know, goods and services. There is no, there was some case law in the city of Eugene 10 years ago or so that they had a provision that said, "Well, you can sell popcorn and whatever else, cotton candy on the street." And some guy wanted to sell joke books, and sued, and said it was a denial of free expression. And even though that's the stupidest case, he actually won. So generally, we don't restrict what is being sold. It's just got to be something that's good, goods or services.
Now, when we look at food carts and food trucks on private property, can we limit that to food?
Well, on private property, sure. What we're talking about is on public...
Public land, yeah.
The, the street vendors ordinance actually applies to both private property and public property. You, you, it applies as amended. It, it allows street vending on street right-ofways in certain zones, like general commercial, recreation commercial, I think, Taft or Nelskott business type of zones. It also currently says it's allowed in parks, but that actually was removed because the regulation is, as stated, the Parks Department administers vendors in parks and under their parks ordinance. So we just clean that up.
That's what we cleaned up at our last meeting.
What's the nature of some of the limitations on street vendors?
Limitation?
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're limited. Can they be all over the city, or are they restricted in certain areas?
No, you know, that's one of the problems with the ordinance, is that it really wasn't very clear about where exactly can you set up. And so what the council did was say, you know, you have to propose a location that's either in the city right-ofway or on private property. And you propose a location, and then we review it to see if it complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Because we were having situations where the pedestrian and vehicular traffic was being obstructed, and, you know, ADA compliance was an issue. So that's, that's what the clarification was about. So basically, it's up to the vendor to come in and say, "Hey, this is, I would like to propose to be here." And if it's in the right zone, in the right-ofway, and there's sufficient clearance for two wheelchairs to pass, and, you know, they can approve it, it's not obstructing vehicular pedestrian access, then it'll be approved. Now, I've asked the Parks Department to create a map, like, so we can say, "In this area of the city, there's plenty of extra room, so you can locate here. And, but in this area of the city, don't bother asking, there just isn't enough room for two wheelchairs to pass." So when I was in Ashland, we did, we did that and really helped expedite things.
And the, the vendor size limit is still four feet by eight?
It's four by eight. We did add provision to allow it to be covered with an awning or canopy or umbrella, because we had people putting up things to stay out of the sun and the weather.
I guess what I don't understand, I watched the city council meeting the other night and was a little confused by the discussion. So a street vendor can, can they sell food? They can sell food, right?
Sure they can.
They can sell food.
But if they do, they have to go through the county and the state health ordinance?
They have to have all the appropriate permits for food handling. The only, there's a, there is a specific provision in the ordinance which was tossed about, is should we get rid of this or change it? It says if you're selling food, you can't be within, is it 10 feet?
Fifty feet of a, fifty feet of the entrance.
Fifty feet of an entrance of a restaurant. So that provision, they toyed with taking it out, and then said, "Well, wait." So that's one of the things they wanted you to look at.
So I guess that's the other question I have, does that ordinance that was passed, does that kind of limit our options in terms of where we think street, uh, food carts could go?
So if we're talking about private property, and, and then we're, we're wide open.
Yeah.
It's talking about the public right-ofway that it does fairly, it could limit us. And if we want to expand use on the public right-ofway, there's a lot of other concerns that we'd need to address.
I think on public, on private property, you guys could say, "We think food cart pod areas are, should be permissible in all these zones." Right now, you can only have food carts in certain zones. But the idea of a pod, you know, like Portland or Beaverton Mall, where you say, "Okay, now this whole lot could be as a temporary or interim use." You know, actually, the Cedar Center property that's down there in the Nelskott area, he's come in several times and said, "I just want, I want to put food carts out here, I'm going to make a food cart pod." And I say, "Well, then come to the meeting and talk about it." Not your property, but that's one of the things you guys are talking about.
Richard, I have a question about, this still eliminates the state park at Rhodes End and other state parks along?
We don't have jurisdiction on the state lands.
Do they, does the state have jurisdiction to put food carts in that?
I have a research there.
I'd have to, you'd have to talk to state parks. I, I know our ordinance says specifically we don't authorize anything in there, because you got to go to them. So we just wanted people to know that if you got a food vendor, or, if you got a street vendor license from us, that didn't mean you could go set up in a state park. I think we're just trying to keep people from walking into a problem.
And Marie, I have a contact with the State Parks Department, so I can get back to the Planning Commission on that.
Along that same direction, does the city have any intent of ever becoming the custodial caretaker of the park? Because I heard that was coming up at some point, and then it has become totally relevant times.
Yeah, and, and it's quite possible. I know that there have been discussions about the city getting the D River Park from the state, but I, I am not involved in those discussions. I know that the, the VCB has, has talked about it.
So, Mary? Have, hasn't there been food carts at the D Wayside during the kite festivals or something like that?
And so that may be done through a special use permit. So keep in mind, like, at the farmer's market, you see food carts and food trucks. Those are approved through the special use permit of the farmer's market umbrella. They're not a permanent setup, food carts in a, in a, what could be a 24-hour, seven days a week location.
The, it's more like the city, the VCB, they, they actually process, like, a special event permit for the kite festival, and so they probably go to the state and get whatever permits are required to have vendors on the state.
So, if I may, okay. So the first item on the outline was, is food, health, and safety. And Patty brought up a good discussion yesterday, and I just wanted to provide, I gave you guys all some handouts.
Did you give us an outline?
Well, in the agenda materials.
Right.
So, the county health department, so let's start with, this one is the Organ Health This talks about the different classes and types of mobile food units underneath Oregon state law. There are four different types, Class 1, 2, 3, and 4. The state law has a very specific requirement for public health, food health and safety. If they're going to provide seating, they have to have a handwashing facility with hot and cold water, that, that a garbage service must be there and have, be disposed of. And then, as well as restroom facilities, I did not see where, so, it does, so if you look on the front page, number 4, towards the bottom, it does require that if, again, if you're having seating, you need to have the hot and cold water and a restroom facility. So the other thing is that Lincoln County, Oregon... The county allows mobile food units as food carts. They have not identified a different, the other types of food cart uses that are allowed under state law. So as you can see here with the image, the food, the food cart is not a vehicle, it is not a trailer necessarily towed by a vehicle.
They actually call them full-service trailers, hot dog carts.
Or motor, I should say, motorized.
Well, a trailer, I mean, I've, I've seen some big trailers. I've seen 18, 24-foot trailers, but they might as well be a restaurant.
But I don't think they have a motor. I think they have to be a tow...
It's still a trailer.
But our ordinance currently is limited to four by eight.
We don't allow those right now. So that is one of the questions we'll be asking, is do we want large trailers? Do we want to put a limitation on trailers? Do we only want food carts? Do we want full-service, you know, full-service food trucks that can get you a whole meal deal?
Yeah, and recently, with this ordinance amendment, we said, "Well, it could be a cart or a table." And there's some pushback on, "Well, we don't really like tables," but at least I heard from at least one councillor, I didn't like that at all, but still voting. Well, we allow not just carts, but tables. But there's a concern that we're somehow diminishing the, what this is. It's supposed to be, you know, substantial, not just some flimsy cart table that, you know, I think that, that was the concern. So you guys can be free to talk about how you feel about that, or whether or not it should be bigger than four by eight, yeah, in terms of food carts.
In terms of tables and things like that, would they, would that be eligible for health standards?
So if you, if you look at the Organ Health Authority under their Class 1, and I'll just read these, "These mobile food units can serve only intact packaged food, not potentially hazardous drinks. No preparation or assembly of foods or beverages may take place on the unit. Not potentially hazardous beverages must be provided under covered herbs or dispenser heads only. No dispensed ice is allowed." This is a, you know, maybe that would be the...
It's eliminate stand.
A lemonade stand, but without ice. Or someone selling donuts off of a table. So there's no restriction at this point that a table isn't allowed for that Class 1 use under the state law. Looking at Class 2, these units serve food allowed under 1, but can also provide hot and cold holding display areas, which would typically have some sort of kitchen or microwave, panini, press, something of those manners. Self-service of unpackaged food is not allowed. And preparation, assembly, or cooking of, oh, of food is not allowed in the unit.
So it's not a, a, a...
So that's more like a hot dog cart.
Right.
And then, going down to Class 3, "These mobile food units may serve any food item allowed under 1 and 2, and may cook, prepare, and assemble food items on the unit. However, they are not allowed to cook raw animal foods." And then Class 4 can serve a full menu. So what I'd like to hear from the Planning Commission is what classes do you think are appropriate to begin with in Lincoln City? And do we want to start with the full gamut and 1 through 4, or look at just 3 and 4? Or what would the Planning Commission like to think that through?
Can I start with a stupid question? Are we mandated by laws and allowed for carts?
No.
Okay, so this is an economic choice...
Correct.
...that we're making, and it would be oppositional to the people that have food facilities in town already, right? I mean, it's going to take a...
I'm not sure that all brick and mortar owners would feel it's oppositional, but we have heard concerns that the, there are brick and mortar restaurateurs that are concerned.
They are paying, they are paying property taxes and helping support the city's infrastructure. And food carts won't, unless we permit it, build it into the cost, to permit.
The cart itself, but if we created a pod or an area, then it's on it, yeah.
Well, I keep trying to make this into my mind so that I know how we get to equal playing ground for everybody.
If you're talking private property, obviously, that private property will be taxed.
Sure.
And so if it's, you know, if the use is changed from a vacant lot to a food cart...
But if you're talking the side of the road, you're not.
Well, if you're on the side of the road, then you're...
You're limited to four by eight.
And you're subject to a city permit, and...
So that's how we would have to get, get equal.
If you're in a park or in the right-ofway, you have to pay a concession fee to the city.
You pay a certain percentage of that.
Yeah, a fee, either a concession percentage or a flat rate. We put in the ordinance, we could do one or the other.
I mean, but that's the, the way the vehicle will use to balance playing field.
Because the point is, exactly as you stated, you know, if you're, if you're along the side of the road, you're skirting the cost of brick and mortar, and you're using public property for a private commercial enterprise, which is not allowed in the Oregon Constitution. You're not supposed, we're not supposed to give public property away to people to use for, so that's why we require concessions or franchises and things like that.
And I would just...
Marie? The question, are we looking at something that's seasonal, or are we looking at year round? In other words, are these food carts going to be here during our summer times, the spring, summer, and fall? Or is it 24-hour, 7 by 24, 365?
And that's something on my list to continue to talk about, but I, that is a good conversation. Most of the jurisdictions that I've reviewed on their regulations require an annual permit, so it's, you're only guaranteed a one year if you meet all of the standards. The health department also requires renewal every year. So I would recommend that we look at maintaining that process to make sure that everybody gets their new health department approval, has everything proper every year, not, "I got it once and I'll continue perpetually."
And I'm not coming in and out of town every once a month or one weekend.
If they wanted to, they would.
Well, they'll go up on Hurst's.
I was just going to say, there are some cities that require their food trucks to move every hour.
I believe Newport requires their food truck in 90 to move every 15 minutes.
Right, so they're not...
But they're on, they're in the public right-ofway, so it's, there's a big difference. If we do pods, they're out of the way.
I have a concern about that. I think as a tourist city and a tourist destination, parking is a priority. And so I like the idea of having food trucks, but I would limit them to pods where you can locate maybe three or four of them, but they're not occupying public parking space anywhere. And they're permanent, and they're located hopefully in areas where there's potentially a lot of foot traffic. And, but I think, you know, for example, they should not be allowed in public parking areas or at beach access points, because they're taking up, they would be taking up parking.
It's also safety.
There's a safety issue. You couldn't get emergency vehicles in there if there's a food truck perhaps. And it's too close to the beach, and that would be, a lot of litter on the beach as a consequence of that, so...
So what I hear, it sounds like the commission wants to talk about private property first and maybe the most, because I'm hearing not interested at this point in the, the public park, you know, public parking and, and parks are dealt with through the street vendor side of things. Well...
In, in terms of parks, you, if you want to be, say you don't have a street vendor license, but you would like to sell hot dogs at all the baseball games in Hurst's Park. So you can go to the Parks Director, get an exclusive use permit, sign a concession agreement, and then they'll go out to the park and they'll find a spot for you that meets ADA. And, you know, you're set up. You don't have to be a street vendor to be a Parks concession.
But that's not the, the focus of our discussion tonight either.
Unless, you know, the, the idea that, does the Parks Department want to see food trucks in the park? And then where, where would they go? In the parking spaces? Well, do we have enough parking where we have extra parking on public property? Maybe that would be something they want to do. Now, to your point about parking, if a private property owner has an approved parking lot, and let's say they have 10 more parking spaces than are required, is that something, it's already developed, it's already out there, they have extra parking spaces, is that something you'd want to say, if you do a site plan amendment and say, "This is an alternative area"?
No, I would not. I would say, "We want these pods located in areas where there's a lot of foot traffic, so we are not encouraging people to get in their cars to go to the food truck. We're encouraging them to walk to the food truck."
So let me ask you a question, Steve. Would you then say that, let's just hypothetically say, the owner of the outlet mall wants to put, take a section of their parking structure...
Hey, that's perfect.
...on the roof?
Yep.
And put three or four food carts up there? That's kind of your vision of what...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So not every parking lot, certainly where there's foot traffic.
Right, and you're not creating new parking spaces. You're encouraging people to get there on foot.
Okay. I would just, I just wanted to remind everybody that, and I'm going to go back to this document ad nauseam, because it took so long to put together. The visioning process, wow, questionable, subjective in a lot of ways. Food trucks came out as a major item that people wanted to see here. You know, I, we're a little behind the times, because they've been around in other cities a very long time, but I think we should kind of keep that in the back of our mind, that there was an overwhelmingly positive response for some fashion of food trucks in the city.
So, in 2015, I drafted an ordinance that got adopted into code for the city of Gick Harbor, and we, just like what Mr. Appicello stated, we required that it be on private property. It could not be in required parking for the uses that were on that site. You had to provide at least two parking stalls for the truck use if there wasn't any nearby, because you didn't want people to drive on unfinished or unimproved areas to get to the truck. We required a garbage can to be within 10 or 15 feet of the service window, and we required them to have a, you know, a commissary kitchen, which was ultimately a duplication of the health department requirements. But the food had to be prepared in a, in a safe and healthy kitchen before going into the food truck to have its final consideration. So we also required it to be reviewed on an annual basis. What we saw, and what my experience from drafting that ordinance and seeing, is there was a lot of interest up front, mostly from businesses that had brick and mortar presence that wanted to be able to, you know, go to the south side of town or the east side of town versus where their brick and mortars located at. And then we saw that a lot of people just kind of slowed down, and the reissuance wasn't occurring, people weren't continuing to get their permits, or they went to a different city, or ended up somewhere where there was more foot traffic. Or property owners were just not, you know, they were charging too much to lease the space on their land for a food truck. So I would, if we talk about public property, I'm really hesitant in regards to grease and making sure that grease disposal is addressed properly. One of the big concerns and issues I learned is, you know, storm drains aren't meant for grease, and if there's disposal unintentionally even, if there's a leak in the truck or something like that, it's not good. The other thing, and it, and it costs the taxpayers. The other thing I learned is that having a secured pad is necessary, so concrete or pavement or a hard surface for the truck also reduces the pollution that could occur after the, after the fact of food service and other items that are occurring. So just like we don't allow parking to be established on a site without being developed as a parking lot and having it, having it established, you know, in and out and that kind of stuff, I would recommend the commission consider not allowing food trucks to go under, be, be less of a requirement than a parking lot, if they are in fact on wheels and utilized vehicularly. Now, that's not to say that if, I, I have never processed or permitted what would be considered a food plaza, I guess, or a food, you know, pod. Yeah, where we might have multiple trucks that want to go there, and maybe they do rotate in and out and change every couple weeks, as long as the owner of the site has that established and we have all the information for it, or create liability for, for the property owner itself. But if we were to do a pod on private property, what's the appropriate size? Is it based upon the square footage of the land? Because if we say four, and then we pick a zone where there happens to be a lot that's only 2,500 square feet, that doesn't necessarily provide the space that we need as requested by the fire department for the separation of the, of the units and uses. So I want to think about density as well as size of what we're looking at. I really do want to get back to the typology of whether it's one, one, two, three, or four, or if we're saying all of them, and they can be inter-dispersed, that fours can mingle with ones in a pod, or if we want to dedicate it. Now, I hear strongly with Steve's comments about foot traffic, and, you know, I immediately went to the pearls, and there, where, okay, well, it, it kind of makes sense then, if this is an economic driver, is this something that we look at in a, in a manner of, let's start with the pearls, and if this works well, maybe we could add a couple different zones outside of the pearls as, as time allows? Or do we want to say 50 feet away from a property line of a, of a brick and mortar building?
You have to, right, for these things.
Which is what I believe Tillamook, Tillamook does, yeah. So, okay, I guess the first question is, are food carts going to be good for Lincoln City, for the, for the Planning Commission?
Because that's the first question.
You know, I, who knows? Seriously, I mean, I can see all sorts of ways that this could, could get out of hand in our D. So I'm probably a little more cautious, and, and if we decide to do this at all, I would maybe entertain doing a pilot project where we, it isn't a license that you have... have forever, but we do it and have some ability to collect some data. What is the real impact on the restaurants in the area? Is there any, what is the, how are we dealing with the garbage, all of that? So, I, I kind of would like to see, I think they're a great idea. I love food carts. I'll just put that out there. I love them. But I can see where they could have some problems. And, you know, when I look at these four classes, I'd almost wanna limit it to the class three and four. And the reason I say that is because I'm concerned about tables popping up with food for sale on private properties, and we turn into a giant food yard sale kind of thing. So, I think if we're gonna commit to food trucks, they oughta be food trucks. They oughta be real, you know, be able to produce a full menu, or, you know, a fairly full menu, and have all of the health requirements taken care of and the state requirements. And so, that's sort of like
What kind of interest have we heard on this? I mean, as a start, but has there been people coming to the city asking about the ability to do this?
Yes, in the visioning project, a lot of people
Well, not that, that was
Okay.
I'm saying commercial, I'm saying commercial, people, not just people who wanna eat food out of a basket.
There, I know a couple of people who would be really interested in this.
To answer your question, yes, we have had some interest come to the Planning Department and ask about this, and some may even be in the audience today.
What size? Were they, the three fours like she's talking about, or just, you know, something that would end up in the front yard?
Because we don't allow it, I'm not sure. So, we told them we needed to look into it. But I believe that three and four are the most full-service food carts that you can have.
I've heard, I've heard, like, food trucks.
Yeah.
But those are the carts and stuff, and there's always, hey, you think it would be nice if we could have a vendor at Regatta Park, and they could sell food, and yeah, that's the food cart thing, and that's, we're actually filing that law, you know, to hire a law firm to file a lawsuit to clear the restriction that prohibits vendors at that park, so.
And that's covered under the, the street vendor aspect.
Yeah, so that's really both, between the Parks Regulations and the Street Vendor things, there's a lot of opportunities for food carts. I think what we've also had now is some real interest in food trucks.
See, I worry about the businesses that are already existing, the brick and mortar restaurants in town. And they barely make it if they do make it on a long-term basis. And more food carts, if they're done as a truck in a full-service restaurant, as Patty suggested, are expensive. So, I would think most of the people would like to set up a hot dog stand when the market is good and before most of the year when there's traffic.
Miles, the weather here is the food truck's worst enemy. Even if you, a windy day will just ruin it for a food truck. You can't work appropriately every, all your napkins.
You mean a car?
A truck, I mean, even if you're in a covered truck, you know, a drivable vehicle, I've seen these things go awry real fast.
You don't wanna get wet waiting for your
No, nobody wants to get wet waiting for their food, and, you know, so, I mean, the brick and mortars still have a safe place inside all the time. We don't have the best weather here. There's a short window of really good weather maybe, and that's not guaranteed to be in a row either.
Well, I, I wonder whether brick and mortar places are really that competitive with food trucks. I think we don't know. And food trucks may be appealing to a completely new market. And I was thinking, I would, if we have food trucks, I think they should be on pods in, like, food trucks
In groups.
Parks, but with a couple of exceptions, because, you know, it might be a good idea to have one at a gas station, if there's enough room there, so somebody, when they leave in town, can fill up and can get plate lunches for the kids in the backseat, and off they go. And, or at the community college, if there's enough students there, that would make that economically viable, to have a food truck there for students who are at the community college. But selected places like that, in addition to the food truck parks, might make sense.
So, we're not considering public land because that's against the law, correct?
No, it's entirely permissible to have a concession on public property. And our ordinances recognize you can have commercial activity in a park, provided it's through an approved concession agreement.
Oh, okay.
Where we get a cut, and we, of course, control where it goes, and, you know, ADA compliance, all of that.
So, if, as we get through the conversation and begin to draft regulations, if we think that there should be changes to 528 for street vendors to address sizing, or maybe better matched with what we're proposing, we can also present that forward to Planning. But we don't have authority over Title V.
So, I have a question. Have you thought of places, have you looked around the city and thought of places that are public that something like this could go?
I, I think it's
Public land that you've identified places that this would be a good place?
Yeah, not in terms of public property. Now, council, court, you know, they could decide to do some kind of business incubation thing and have a food truck pod somewhere. But I think they're probably gonna defer and let the private enterprise do that. And the only thing I think the city will do is allow food carts and possibly food trucks to operate concessions in the city parks, Regatta Park, you know, and Curtis and things like that, so.
So, not on any of the empty city-owned property that
Then the park. This might be a good opportunity for property owners, if there's a building on their lot that's vacant because the business has moved out, to temporarily bring in a food truck. And that provides income for the people that own the food truck and for the property owner as well.
The city has a number of, the city has a number of underutilized public parking lots, thinking of Taft, for example.
Yeah, on the east side of 101.
And what if, what if you put a food truck allowance here, maybe two or three or four, and that created interest, that people go walk there?
If it's underutilized, that would make sense. Or if it's not underutilized, no, yeah.
I'm gonna assume that at some point in time we process, if we do go forward, we're gonna have some ability for the ongoing entities in town to make public comment to what
Oh, yes, yes. So, this is
We'll have a hearing.
You know, 'cause I really like to hear their input on this too.
Correct. And what I'm doing, I know I'm a new director, I'm changing things up on you guys, for the work study tonight, I really wanted to hear your guys' opinions. I don't wanna come with a draft format or some parameters of an ordinance already established. I want this to be truly from the ground, from the Planning Commission ground up. And I'm your staff. I'm here to draft what you guys recommend. So, we can establish a few parameters. I'm also here to do your research, so if you wanna tell me tonight to look into a few things, and maybe start with looking at, you know, what a complete application should look like, or come back with a list of all of the commercial zones within our Pearls, you know, whatever you think that we can do to start getting towards an outline of an ordinance, and give me those parameters that you would like me to consider as I draft them. That's really what I'm here for you tonight.
If I could just make
The peanut gallery, yes.
Peanut gallery. If I could just make one comment, what you're really looking at is the change of the zoning ordinance to allow food trucks as a permitted or a conditional use. And so, we've had a lot of discussions about what the city could or could not do on its own property. But the underlying issue is, do you want to allow food trucks in commercial areas? And I can tell you that there is interest, there is interest from groups that are businesses that are interested in developing ultimately a long-term brick and mortar building, but for the short term, they're interested in food carts to get their business started.
Which is not atypical.
Right. I think often restaurants are undercapitalized, and maybe this could help prevent that problem.
So, should, would you like us just to go around and
Yeah, if you guys wanna just throw your ideas and read in.
What we think. Sean?
Oh, thanks.
What do you think of food trucks?
I think food trucks are great. I have specifically gone out of my way to go to Portland and back, just to go to a couple of food trucks. Just one of the places I know I can get some good barbecue, and they use my chowder recipe, so there's that.
Do you go to a pod of food trucks in Portland?
Yeah.
I mean, because some of them are pods and some are just
The places I like to go to are in these clusters that just pop up, and people are, "Ooh, what do you think? Ooh, what do you think? Ooh." And, or, you know, you go with five or six people, and everybody just disappears, and then you all meet back at the table, and
So, do the
You've got falafels, you've got a burger, you've got pizza, you've got whatever.
So, the places you go have seating provided?
Yeah, there's usually, some of these pods, especially, there's a couple that are, it's like a gypsy circle of these food trucks, which I think is pretty neat little setup. And then I'll share a tented area, or maybe there's just a little puff of things, and there are all these wood benches, and everybody just sits with everybody.
Bathroom facilities? That's part of the regulation, if you provide tables, you have bathrooms?
If they're not a stack of porta potties somewhere nearby, there's usually a small brick and mortar building with restrooms inside of it. I've seen the public restroom used in some cities too, as the restroom to use.
What about trash?
Trash, there's lots of trash receptacles. There's not one that, I mean, Portland, they're super tight on it. Everywhere, I don't know if there's, I could see one everywhere I went. So, that was always good.
What about recyclable materials? I mean, I have some concern about these food trucks using containers that we then issue.
That would be a whole other issue of the city not allowing, other than one and two, recyclables, or using paper straws, stuff like that. I think that would be a council matter rather than us, but I agree with you on that.
You're probably right.
But it could be, it could be that way with this.
Okay.
I'm concerned about that issue as well, especially since we're right near the ocean, and we don't want plastic on our leeches.
Right.
So, I would recommend, you know, we have paper, you know, food is served on paper plates or in a paper box.
Or biodegradable.
Or biodegradable. And you carry it away in a paper bag, but plastic bags aren't used, and plastic plates aren't used, and no styrofoam.
And you like pods?
I don't have much experience with them, but my Sunday treat here during farmer's market time is always to go to the farmer's market, get my lunch at one of the food trucks there. Always very good food, yeah, yeah.
Any other thoughts you have on them? What about this size? I mean, I mentioned the class three and four
I like that. I think I stated some of my options, and where I think they should not be and where I think they could be, and, yeah, and I think
So, high-traffic?
High-foot traffic.
High-foot traffic.
And not near any beach access point.
Okay. What about, what about for special
Events?
Well, you know, what about, I mean, we talked about, are they 24/7? Are they seasonal? What about a Friday night food trucks? And they're somewhere maybe at, not at the beach, but somewhere along?
Well, for example, the area you mentioned in Nuska, that would be a perfect location for a Friday night
Where is this there?
Doing one night somewhere out here is not gonna be worth coming.
Okay, I'm just
Well, it might be on busy weekends, because, you know, there are bars nearby
Well, or like the kite festival? Don't concessioners come just for the kite festival?
If you were here for the whole weekend, it's worth it, but one night, I'm not driving this way.
Okay, all right. I didn't know you had a food truck, Sean.
Well, I'm saying this, if there was a food
Put the house on barbecue.
If there was a food truck pod at that location in Nuska, and I was the owner of one, I would keep it open on some Friday and Saturday nights, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other?
And I think there are other locations within the city. We may want just one food truck, like at a gas station, for example, or a community college, or other areas like that, or right here, City Hall, you know, the parking lot.
The extra parking spaces.
Sure. Maybe the culinary
They can manage, they can operate.
Any of the food trucks with a deep fryer might be a problem for being that close to a gas station. I'm just gonna throw that safety hazard
Yes. Well, we did have a note from the Fire Marshal, and I really do appreciate
He probably wouldn't want you to be anywhere in that parking lot. I think other cities do that.
He would wanna have certain controls over that too. Okay, any other thoughts you had, Steve?
Nope, for now.
Okay, Marie?
Some of the things I think, first of all, I think that food carts are a good idea because they bring some variety of other foods in. And you also have a lot of people who come here who can't necessarily, if they bring their kids over per day at the beach, they'd like to get a hot dog, or they'd like to get something less expensive, can't go in and afford a big meal sitting down at a restaurant. So, this gives them another alternative, and it would, I think it would add more business to the city, having these available and making it a little more appealing for people to come in. The variety of foods in these food carts is amazing. There are so many kinds. I was up in Portland recently, and I was amazed. We saw one of these pod areas, and there were like fifteen different kinds of food, fifteen carts and fifteen different kinds. It was hard to make a choice. And they were competitively, financially, they were very competitive with each other too, which was nice. So, it's, and you could get a variety of foods. I like the idea very much of restricting the types of, whether it's paper products or looking at recyclable or biodegradable, something in that respect, so that there would be a limit as to what we would be seeing, garbage or what was left. And I thought, and I don't think this is, I don't know that this is the place to say it, but I'm gonna mention it, and I was thinking, gee, if we had fees attached to this, why couldn't we apply some of those towards the garbage or the cleanup, putting those towards helping police, the fees we collect from them, to police some of the garbage and the things that were going on?
Do the concession fees go into the general fund?
The concession fees for food trucks, if we're talking on private property, wouldn't apply. So, we would, it would be my recommendation that we require each truck or cart to have at least a 32-gallon and dispose of it, and make sure it goes and is safely contained at night and isn't accessible by any vermin or people.
I think that's, I think that's good.
Because we've got people that wanna pick through the garbage all the time.
If we're not doing the pods, if we're doing the pods, and then we've
It could be a community space.
Yeah, it could be a community, a big dumpster, big recycling van that comes and gets taken away once a week.
So, they're responsible for having
I don't know, if we're providing a pod space, I think we would, that would be in their fees, and we would take care of that stuff. That would just kind of be a no-brainer.
I'm curious as to how much staff time it would require the city to manage this once it gets going, if it gets going.
So, with my thoughts, we would require, if we're doing, if someone wanted to come in and propose a pod, it would require a site plan review, you know, and that's making sure, and even if that's, you're the gas station owner, and Marie wants to come in and bring her, you know, falafel truck in, you know, I'd still need to analyze the site plan to make sure that there was safe ingress and egress of yours parking structure, or your, your gas station, and her food truck, and make sure that everything else is in order, so.
Even if it was a food cart, it'd still go through that ADA review.
And so, site plan review would be, I will strongly recommend the Planning Commission include that.
Would meat smokers fit under this? Giant, enormous meat smokers?
I think the, the, under state law, barbecues are only allowed if you have a type four.
Right.
And I would believe that a meat smoker might meet the definition of a barbecue under the ordinance.
But I think, especially
The nutrition system needs to be
Especially in the summertime, when the restaurants are full and people can't get in, and they're looking for something to quick, to get for the kids and everything, I think this would be wonderful. I think it would be a little more of a financial risk for the people to be there, like in November, December, except except on weekends, because we just don't have the, we don't have the traffic flow and the people.
Unless there's a hospital or a restaurant. There's a ton of employees there who are hungry all the time.
Yeah, well, that's one of the, that's one of the successful models of a food truck is hitting the big businesses and whatever.
High schools, junior colleges, colleges, any sports arena, if you get college boys eating food like it's going out of style.
But that, then that would be competing with the brick and mortar in the winter. The winter months would be really competing with them because right now, there are more people out.
They've got the time to go to a brick and mortar, they've got time to come out, eat this on the way back to there.
Sorry, Sean, I'm trying to listen to what Marie's comments are, so I don't know.
So that would, that would only, you know, that's why I was asking, is this year round or?
I wanna get back to that. So, so you're, what I'm hearing is that you don't believe that there would be a conflict, an impactful, a large impact to the brick and mortar during the tourism season because of the increase of our population.
Right.
But outside of tourism season, who knows that the food truck could even maintain?
I've owned a nice Greek parlor and I can tell you right now, it was in brick and mortar. And in the summertime, it was great because we could send out a cart, in essence, and sell that way as well as have our brick and mortar. But the winter months were our months that we struggled and struggled because if we didn't make it in five months, we didn't make it.
Right.
Okay, and a lot of restaurants, when you're talking here, the reason the hilltop is the hilltop is because it came in as a Denny's, could not make it as a Denny's.
Yeah.
Because it couldn't meet the seven by 24, 365 days.
Right. Do you recommend then that we look at this as a seasonal use? Or would you say allow it year round and let the market decide for the?
I think it would be good for year round or to recommend that, to at least try it. But I think that the expectation you might find is some people would like rather do it seasonally because of that very thing, because they may not have it, have the ability to, to make their, what they need.
To turn, put the lights on.
Yeah, let the market decide. Then, going back to what you said, what you're asking about food carts, one thing I really like about them, what you pointed out as a variety and a choice and the quality of the food, often it's very healthy choices.
Yeah.
And it's rehaleable.
It's another local, local food use. It's nice. Miles, what do you think?
I worry about the brick and mortar restaurants, but I, I think the market will decide and the food carts or the trucks, food trucks, could be a good thing and add something else to Lincoln City as a draw. So I, I am for all four types of, of mobile kitchens being utilized and I think the Regatta Park could have a vendor selling hot dogs during the summer season and probably do pretty well. But in October, it'll die off and then you should be smart enough to realize that when it expires to Brooklyn.
Sure. And I think as we've talked about, the Regatta Park would be falling under the concessions vendor regulations we already have, so this is a little bit more.
I worry about what Steve suggested too, ocean litter and plastic. And I don't, I think Lincoln City should adopt in the, at least in this venue, the standards for biodegradable merchandise or footwear, etc.
Good, okay. Any other specifics about that?
I really don't have any specific things.
Anything?
Not that you can be for me?
No.
I think I'm kind of with a more protective towards the brick and mortar. But after the discussion, I'm, I'm kinda a little bit softer. I mean, I enjoy that McFood. Mary is great. I can eat Greek tomorrow, Italian after that, whatever, you know? And it's all good.
Yeah.
You know, and so having more options is a great thing. Maybe even enhance the experience of the tourists that comes here by having more options. I agree with what has been said certainly about beach access, like we wanna keep them away from there. I mean, maybe, I'm not real comfortable with them being on the edge on streets. I like pods more, that whole mentality of having a location for them. We have lots in the Regatta Park, like you said, that if they ever get the disc course in, there's another option. But I mean, we have quite a few options where people could put those and, and make money and not affect the people around them because there's no option there, you know, the school. So they, they have their place in this town and I guess to try to make it work, I think we have to give them a chance. I would just wanna, I wanna do it in a sane manner, not a, I mean, yeah, the market, whatever the market can bear kind of thing. Like I hate to see, you know, a bunch of go in, trash, show up, so the three, four kind of trucks where people have put some money into their, they've invested something in it. They have an attitude about taking care of things and not just, they're selling cookies, you know, and throwing them out at the wayby, you know? So, yeah, the higher end of those. I don't know how you do this in a not a hard format moving forward so that we have flexibility built into our code. I don't know if we can do that.
We, we have a list of permitted uses and we have a list of conditional uses. So probably next question's gonna be permitted use, conditional use. Conditional use means more process. Permitted use still has to have a site plan, less process.
I would certainly say I don't wanna see anything like this in the residential area. We already decided with VRDs that, that the residents don't want this kind of an environment brought into their own neighborhoods. And so commercial, commercial, keep it, you know.
Well, does that apply to an ice cream truck?
Well, we're talking lots.
We're talking, so.
No, I know, I know, I'm saying residential.
There you go, there you go, I like that.
What about the Ice Cream Man? I mean, everybody loves Ice Cream Man.
That's a place I'd get your kid running, let's be real. I mean, where you send your kids to see him drop.
You're a dork.
Well, you know, all the kids chasing the exhaust pipe.
I like to follow the good humor trick of Roxanne. Visiting my tempers and every afternoon I can hear the ringing and run after.
Smart kids stop front of them, okay? Early, they know where they're going to get there, you know?
Patty, you and I.
I want to chase them.
Yeah, I don't think we have an ice cream truck.
I was the director of House of Graviton, so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
But yeah, I, I, I think that, yeah. I don't wanna see a food truck in the residential area. An ice cream truck, I would maybe make an exception for because it says Mr. Dingeling on it.
So try finding a stall is not a big deal.
Kate, Kate, how's it?
So with residential areas, I, I hear what you're saying, but the other thing I heard was that the college would be an excellent location and that's in a residential zone. But it's a conditional use. And so is Taft High School, it's a residential zone, but it's a conditional use. So something to think about if.
Yeah, but because, you know.
And the hospital, I heard also, which is professional campus, which is not one of the zones where we currently allow street vending. But, you know.
Well, maybe we'd have to address that, make it possible for food cart.
Well, they could be under conditional use.
Yeah, and that requires public security.
But, you know, I guess, you know, that maybe that's how, you know, we have to go address that as a new issue after we decide we want them, where do we want them because we've, we've excluded VRDs from residential areas for a reason. We don't want commercial establishments in those areas. That was a main driver in getting them out. So why would you bring another commercial establishment right into that area? That's, that's a two-faced thing that I've ever seen.
I think we're all in agreement that these are not residential.
Special cases, yes.
But could it be a residential zone that's developed with a non-residential use?
No.
Pursuant to a conditional use like?
So I just wrote for maybe large congregation areas, I'm thinking of Taft High School and the, you know, the track and the football games or something like that. So I'm gonna think about this a little more.
Right.
And, and think about if there is a way that for uses, for approved conditional uses within a residential zone, if it is temporary on-site type thing.
Just, yeah, just to mix the two together, why not a church, a big church parking lot on Sunday?
You know, that, that brings up to mind something that I was thinking of, was whether a nonprofit group, if they add space, could have a food truck permanently or temporarily on their site as a way.
Depending on what zones you guys select.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
I mean, that's what comes down to is the zoning regulations.
Nonprofits might wanna do that, yeah.
I, I agree, that, that might be a valid addition to one of those facilities. Certainly not at the food bank though.
Richard, something to say here.
Just, I, I understand the history of VRDs more than anybody. But a residential zone that has been fully developed with a hospital or a school or an office, maybe you list them and say, you know, normally not allowed in residential zone unless it's completely developed with any of the following uses. And then you put down the kind of generators, like a whole building full of hungry nurses.
I like that wording, can we use that? Well, for example, could one, could one go in the parking lot at the police, at the new police station?
Well, no, because it's public property, but, and they certainly get a ticket.
They don't ever there.
And it is the planned industrials.
Donuts.
Oh wait. Professional campus.
So I, I think that the zones, like Kate was talking about, we need, we need to think about, okay, where are a bunch of people? And, and if you really want food trucks to succeed, you ought to put them where the people are.
But I think it might be a conditional use under that particular set of circumstances.
But that, like the hospital, the hospital is not a seasonal, it doesn't have peaks and it's just busy all the time. I mean, with, with people in there and, and nursing staff, there's always these people there all year round. And if we limit food trucks to just the six months out of the year.
I wasn't thinking of that way at all.
No, I'm just throwing it out there, I mean, if I'm trying to start a business and a food truck is the way I'm going to see if I'm gonna open a brick and mortar, let's see what my clients, oh, they really like this, okay, but I can only do this for six months, but I can't quite get my feet in.
Well, I would assume we'd give Maggie permission.
Did I hear from anyone they wanted to do it for just a seasonal? I did not make that.
Miles had, had mentioned that it might be best, because his concern for brick and mortar, that, that maybe we just do during the peak season so that the influx of tourists doesn't, it washes everything out.
You know, I, I think the, the.
And that's a concern.
The food trucks fill a niche that is slightly different than the brick and mortar places and slightly different than the drive-through places. When I think of them, I think of more fresh food, ethnic food, you know, it's a different kind of food. It's not driving through a fast food restaurant for your kids. And so I'm not really convinced that the detriment to the brick and mortar is as significant as, as it often is described. I'd like to see.
Competition in the restaurant doesn't make us scary.
I'd like to see what happens when we do this and, and if there's an impact. But I, I do know that when we did the visioning process, this came up over and over and over and over again. And I think it's a good fit with a tourist-based clientele. People like food trucks, they recognize them, they know what they're all about. And if they're in a place where there's high traffic of tourists, that makes a lot of sense. And I also like the idea of putting them someplace where people have limited time to leave to go get something else, you know, and they can, I mean, I, I know from a previous life that, you know, when you work in a giant office building and you, you know, they used to notify you on a text when the food truck showed up. And everybody hit the ground running to get to that food truck. So I know that they're, they are a product of social media and they're, they're hugely popular and I think they're a good fit for the community. I'd like to see how they, how they fit. But that said, I would like to see them limited to the actual food trucks. I'm still a little confused, we talk about them being in a, in a pod, which seems to have a permanence to it. And that runs counter to some of the regulations that I was reading that suggested that they had to be on wheels and the ability to be moved like that. So is, are we going to run into a disconnect with the county and state requirements of?
Well, the county requirements are for what they allow in the county. The health department requirements from the, the mobile food truck, the Oregon Health Authority, is what we need to make sure that we fall underneath them with them.
I'd say there's.
And they must be mobile at all times during operation.
Probably always gonna be an interim use. I don't, an interim use, I don't really think that, I mean, you, you can go in downtown Portland and find a property that's got all these food carts and food trucks on it. And probably the price, eventually, they're, they've been too successful in the sense that those, you know, lots are now worth so much money, though ultimately there's gonna be an office building there. So they, they will ultimately move. So I think, I don't think it's inconsistent to have them be movable carts, because I don't think they're always gonna be there. And they come and go.
But I, I think one advantage, Patty, to having them in a pod, rather than requiring that they move around every day or something, is that we know which ones have permits and which ones don't. So if we require them to be in a pod and we see somebody operating on a street, you know, they don't have a permit.
Well, and so the state defines mobile food unit is any vehicle that is self-propelled or can be pulled, pushed down the sidewalk, street, highway or waterway. Food may be prepared, food may be prepared or processed on this vehicle and the vehicle is used to sell and dispense food to the ultimate consumer. The state does not have any size limit to mobile food trucks, but they must meet the basic requirements. They must be mobile at all times during operation. The unit must be on wheels, excluding boats, at all times.
So it's a potential to be mobile.
They have to be able to, no, they have to be able to be moved in an emergency.
The potential to be mobile, they can, they can sit there for twenty hours.
It sounds like they're driving.
But if the wheels are flat.
They don't have to be moving.
If the wheels are flat, they're not mobile. So they have to be able to be moved at any time.
Yeah, because I mean, food truck owners may wanna get a permit, somebody who operates one in McLeanville might wanna come over here for a weekend, you know, and operate, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can put a panini press on my kayak, is what you're saying.
Well, I was, I think of.
I'm not sure the health department would approve that.
It's gonna give you a shaker.
Very wrong extension.
Okay, sorry to stop you there, Patty.
No, 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 that's okay, that's all right. So I guess, so my issues are, I, I want them to be mobile food trucks, not little cadles with food on top of them. Recyclable containers is huge. I do agree, the high foot traffic areas and the pods, I think that's, would be a good way to sort of do a pilot of this to see if they're going to function or not. I don't know about having one at a gas station, although I do know some of the best Mexican food I've had is gas station food trucks. although I do know some of the best Mexican food I've had is gas station food trucks.
Some type of gas station.
And, um, you know, and I like the, I, I, I think they should be, um, they should go through a site plan review process.
This has been really helpful. Um, I got a lot of other questions for you, but we've got an hour into this. And so I want to be able to take and digest this and come back with, uh, the additional questions. But I'll just give you guys some hints. Sinence. What if we have a public plaza or public space, um, along, um, in front of a brick and mortar that doesn't serve food and they want to have their customers to be able to eat? Do we allow designations for public plazas for a carps or a truck to be able to be there? Um, I'm thinking in Gag Harbor, we had a brewery. The first food truck actually permit we ever got was from the brewery because they're under state law, they would have had to turn into a bar if they had a full service food. But they were able to get a food truck to park in front of their brewery and bring in that, and then have, instead of having people go to the pizza place or the Thai place down the street.
Right.
They were actually buying the food from Seven Seas Brewery and then going in and eating the food inside with their beer. So what if we have, uh, brick and mortar businesses that want to be able to serve food, but they don't want the investment of a half a million dollar kitchen?
Yeah.
And they can invest in a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar food truck to have on their site, assuming they have space.
I would like that.
Well, that's private, that would be private property, right?
But it would not be in a pod.
But it would not be in a pod. Yeah, I don't think they, uh, let me back up. I don't think they have to be in a pod.
All right.
But I think a pod in our...
Would make them nice on us.
It would be, it would be a nice way to test them, I guess.
It also makes it easy to tell people where to go.
Yeah.
But they can be on the site plan. Everybody agrees. They gotta be each one on the site.
Yes, yeah, I think that's important.
And reviewed for ADA and all that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Fine.
Um, and then hours of operation. Yeah, I don't expect answers from you guys now, but I just want to think about hours of operation, um, whether we, if someone has a public plaza space on private property in front of their business, do we want to allow them to have that, um, as a, as a food cart, truck, um, table? Um, signage, are they allowed as much signage as they can fit on their vehicle? And if they don't have a vehicle, they get an A board? Or, you know, so just think about those things. I've seen food trucks get wrapped with the wraps jacks and I think they look great. Looks better than a billboard or a temporary sign.
Rather than do their publicity just...
Social media.
Social media.
Um, a couple of questions I wanted to make sure. So we definitely, Gary addressed the, the residential versus commercial zones.
Yeah.
We briefly talked about uses that, um, are conditional uses within residential zones. But for my initial, uh, take on this, I really, um, think that the pearls and the commercial districts within the pearls and then a distant separation from any beach access, um, like a buffer, like you can't be within fifty or a hundred feet of a beach access or...
More than that.
Probably, yeah, you're probably right. Because we don't want people bringing it down to the beach if the garbage isn't, a garbage can isn't provided there.
Right.
Um, and then, um, do you want me to bring a list of every commercial zone that we have in the city? Or do we wanna start with looking and focusing on, on the pearls, um, through 101? Or do we wanna look at where food establishments are currently allowed and stick to those zones, which might create more problems, but...
If you allow commercial zones outside of beach accesses and then let them determine where they think they're gonna make money, that, that's probably the better choice. Yeah, because you don't know whether the pearls really have that, you know, what's gonna work better for them.
Right, right.
Okay.
Where's it gonna make money? I mean, because, you know, nobody would think about the university or the, the hospital, but they are obviously good choices.
Uh-huh, okay. And those are not commercial zones, though, so...
We can make a list. We can specify if this is included in, in the fully developed residential zone.
Okay, perfect. This has been really helpful. Thank you guys.
That it?
A little rocky at the front, but I like that we got to figure it, figure it out.
Sure.
So let's clear this stuff out of your way so we don't get our, not good news stuff.
So now we have, um, uh, under new business, places of worship accessory uses.
Yes, I'm gonna clean up my desk here. So, my temporary desk. Here is a handout for everyone on the issue at hands. Um, should go for him.
Could you sing that statue?
I, I did not. Because... There you go. So I have two maps. One looks better than the other, but, um, this is the best way for you both to see what's on. Next one, two, one, this way. Sorry, Miles, we have to look upside down. And then we'll do one this way. What these maps are showing are all of our places of worship within the city.
Those are the red dots.
All of the dots in it. So, um, what the, what these maps are showing are the places of worship within the city limits, um, including, there's one that got included right outside the city limits. So that one is not of discussion tonight. Um, what the different colors of the churches show is green means it's in a residential zone, red means it's in a commercial zone. As you can see, out of the, the twenty churches that are within the city limits, um, we have six in commercial and fourteen in our residential, um, districts. The, um, word document handout that I provided, courtesy of Mr. Appicello, um, identifies the big issue that we have is that, uh, places of worship throughout the city are, uh, all required a conditional use permit to be cited. And our code currently identifies that accessory use language, um, on the, towards the bottom of the front page states, "Other accessory uses and accessory buildings and structures customarily pursuant to a permitted use." Not a permitted conditional use, but a permitted outright use. So what, um, I'd like to talk about tonight with the planning commission, and again, this is a work study, you know, decision or directions will be made, but I'm just looking for some guidance here to, to draft a, uh, future ordinance for public consideration. Do we want to amend the definition of worship, place of worship to allow them to, uh, utilize any accessory uses, uh, beyond just their congregation and their, and their service times? Do we wanna specify the place of worship accessory uses and the limitations on that? Meaning places of worship can have accessory uses, but it shall not serve more than this many people at one particular time. It shall not, um, occur during specific hours, time, time, place, manner. Um, or do we wanna require accessory uses to be addressed in the conditional use process? Therefore, every accessory use that, uh, a place of worship wants to use has to go through a conditional process as well, um, that would pre, provide a public hearing and pub, public opportunity in front of the, the council, or, and, sorry, in front of the commission. Um, now, we do have state statute that, uh, Mr. Appicello provided me that, if you wanna go ahead and read the...
Yeah, this is 227-500 and, you know, uh, all, all your land use, okay, is, is subject to, you know, state statutes, administrative rules, our own comprehensive lands, so there's this hierarchy. So 227-500 basically is telling us that, uh, regulation of property used for religious activity, covenant required with. Uh, if a church, synagogue, temple, mosque, chapel, meeting house, or other non-residential place of worship is allowed on real property under state law and the rules of local zoning ordinances and regulations, a city shall allow the reasonable use of the real property for activities customarily associated with the practices of the religious activity, including worship services, and that's pretty clear, because that's the definition of place of worship, um, religion classes, weddings, funerals, meal programs. Um, then it says childcare, but not including private or parochial school education for pre-garden, pre-kindergarten through grade twelve or higher, or higher education. So we're not required to include schools in what we say a place of worship includes. Um, it does, however, allow that providing housing or space for housing in a building that is detached from the place of worship, provided at least fifty percent of residential units provided are affordable to households with incomes equal to or less than sixty percent of the median family income for the county in which the real property is located.
I'm sorry, wait, would you read that part again?
So it's, it's exclusionary zoning, basically. It's specifying that they can, uh, we can set, uh, you know, the income levels, uh, as part of this housing levels.
This, this change came out of, I believe, the EDU. There was also a, a change to the EDU's, um, statute at the same time this, last year, I believe. And, um, so what it is allowing is churches, this is a little different than the accessory uses, but churches can develop housing on their site, uh, as a, as a right under the state law.
And it's not housing for, it's not like what I traditionally think, like, it's not a rectory. It's housing for the general public.
There's actually a, a, a bill in the legislature right now to add, uh, door, what's the, what's the word?
Parsonage.
Not, it's, uh, a rectory.
Parsonage.
Yeah.
Parsonage.
Yeah, parsonage to the list of things that are allowed. So that's actually pending. But this is really just affordable housing.
Yeah.
In, in regards to accessory uses, we're, we're also thinking about, um, you know, if there's overnight emergency uses that certain churches are doing to their mission.
Sure.
Um, you know, do we want to allow that? Do we wanna require it to go through as a conditional use? Do we wanna allow it permitted outright because the church primary use is the place of worship?
Yeah, Ron.
I need to give you a little bit more issues.
Yeah.
To bring this into focus, because you're, you're, you're going well past what the original intent of, of this meeting was about. So last year, um, the warming shelter was trying to find a place to locate, and that brought up a lot of zoning issues. And one of the things that we had discovered that was kind of going under the radar is that churches were using their facilities as a shelter, okay? And it was limited. It was never really more than ten or twelve.
Ten or twelve people or days?
People in it, no, people in it. Um, and some of those at times were in commercial areas and sometimes they were in, um, residential areas. And this had been going on for quite some time. It was never an issue. It was never brought up because no one ever thought to brought it, to bring it up. But this, the last, last year with the warming shelter brought it to light. And as a matter of fact, we had one church that's in a residential area, but that actually volunteered to, uh, house the warming shelter, but could not because it, um, it was not permitted as a use or conditions or accessory use. However, as I mentioned, other organizations have been, have been using churches, um, sometimes, most of the time in commercial areas, but sometimes in residential areas.
So other organizations were using the churches or this was an activity initiated by the churches?
They are using, no, they are continuing to be used by the churches.
As a shelter.
As a shelter, yeah. Churches are, are working with other nonprofit groups to basically house people. It was happening under the radar until the warming shelter ran into trouble and they said, well, how come they get to do it? And then it was like, what do you mean they get to do it? You know, it wa, it wasn't even really, it wasn't even really that. The warming shelter did not do that. This was something that we spotted as staff and said, holy smokes, we got a bigger problem than we dealt with. But the other groups, you know, they were aware of it and especially became aware of it when we said, I'm sorry to this other church, you can't do it because it's in a residential zone.
Right.
So what we're trying to bring to you tonight is narrow. All the things that Richard and Lindsay have discussed, if you wanna broaden it, that's okay for you to consider. But we really want you to focus in on the use of churches as a shelter for a limited number of people in various zones that you have.
And for a limited amount of time or just a limited number of people?
The ones that are using it are, are not warming shelters. They're using it year round.
Right.
The churches year round.
Right.
Emergency situations.
No.
No, they are not emergency situations. They are housing.
Homeless?
Yeah, homeless.
Okay, yeah, because I was wondering, is the driving for, is the driving issue here because of homeless? Is it because of the warming shelter or a combination thereof?
No, no, the warming shelter is going to be dealt with separately as they try to find a location. That's a, you know, that's a, that's a whole different thing.
Okay, so, so you're asking us if we want to make it so that places of worship can become de facto affordable housing providers?
No.
No.
Affordable housing.
De facto shelters for homeless up to a certain number.
We had a...
Okay, but not limited by time?
But not limited by time.
Well, limited by the number of people for sure.
Right.
But maybe time, not in the sense of, you know, the winter months, but in time in the sense that we're not talking about having people move into this church for, you know, a year and a half. I mean, that's not what we're talking about, length of time.
But they could.
Now, Richard, is this a conditional use or permitted use in the commercial zone?
Well, no, it's...
They're conditional.
Oh, the church is a place of worship. It's a conditional use in every zone.
No, no, I'm not talking about the church. I'm talking about can a church in the commercial zone house the homeless?
There isn't, there is nothing in our code that authorizes that. And the reason for reading the statute was that the state has told us, if you allow a church, you shall allow these uses as well as, uh, reasonable as basically as customarily associated with the church. So they're basically telling us here, this list is, is basically accessory. This is allowed.
And allows housing or...
Purpose housing.
It does not, does not list shelters. It, it's, it lists affordable housing on a separate property. So it basically allows a church to operate low-income housing.
Okay.
It also allows them to do meal programs and funerals and weddings and religious classes and, uh, but not school. And, but yes to childcare. But the, the point of bringing this up is that it does not mandate, the state law does not say we have to allow churches to house the homeless up to any number or whatever. So then the question is, is it, is it, is that what a church is? And I, I think...
Let me, we, my church had a, this direct issue, okay? A nonprofit came to our church. He wanted to use our gymnasium to put families in who had lost their homes for emergen, you know, just lost their home, whatever, got evicted. And they needed short term, and the term was what they called a short term place for these families to live till they could get their feet under them again, okay? And, um, they were looking at, and, you know, in our particular case, we had a big gymnasium, so they were talking about the numbers and all that other stuff. But that's the kind of situation I'm sure that has been brought to light. And, and they, and, and they're still looking for more facilities because of so many kids in this community who do not have addresses because they don't live in a house. They live in somebody's bedroom or somebody's couch or somebody's car. And, and they needed something better than that. And that's what they came to our church asking for.
And the reason why this is significant is that if the city doesn't act, now that it is on the radar, the staff just can't look the other way, which means if we don't allow, and Richard will correct me if what I say is wrong, if we don't change our ordinance to allow this type of a shelter, then we will be forced to shut down the, the programs that are currently operating.
Right. Have there been issues with these programs from complaints from neighbors?
No, they were operating under the radar because there weren't issues.
And they've been, and for years.
And, and my point is that, you know, um, some people argue that, well, it is my faith to, uh, serve the poor and therefore you're interfering with my religious, uh, exercise of my religious liberty. liberty, and therefore you're violating state and federal law." And I think this tells us that the state doesn't take that position when it comes to homeless shelters, even though that argument has been made, but the case law across the country is, goes back and forth. In New Jersey, no. In Massachusetts, yes, it's all over the place. But so in order to avoid that argument, we want to say, what are some common sense accessory-type limitations that we could place?
Do we know how many churches have been involved with this? Do you know how widespread this is in town?
I don't know how many churches are involved in it, but I know that if we look at it, what we need to look at is how many churches we have in town. And that's the important-
It's currently about six, and I'm aware, but it has varied, but I think there's about six.
Do we know that it has to do with size? In other words, is it large churches? Do we have any churches?
No, it has to do with the churches themselves.
And are the churches constructing separate buildings? Or are they doing all of it in the gym?
No, I'm involved, I'm involved with two churches that participate, and it's their classrooms.
Right. I just got back, I spent the weekend in San Francisco, and I visited my old church there in the Mission District. They have contracted with an organization that brings homeless people that spent the night in the city shelter, are allowed to use the neighborhood church to sleep their sleeping bags during the daytime, as a way of having a place to go during the day. And I think a lot of churches just see this as part of their mission, you know, beating the perimeter for homeless.
But because we don't want to end up getting into an argument with churches about whether or not it's a restraint on their religious exercise, because you always have these tensions of, you know, establishment clause versus free exercise, and so we want to kind of split down the middle and just do the zoning thing and say, okay, since the state law is saying all these things are, you know, reasonable use of the real property customarily associated with practice of religious activity, we can say, maybe by changing the definition of place of worship, to say, the city recognizes the uses in ORS 227-500 as being authorized as a place of worship, and in addition to, and then just add what we want and say, you know, emergency provision of homeless, emergency housing for-
They were asking us-
No more than 10 or whatever.
They were talking to us about family units, though. It wasn't individual homeless people. They were specifically looking at the churches as a place for family units.
That's one program.
Okay.
But there are different programs.
But there are different.
And I'm assuming that the definition of place of worship is restricted enough to avoid someone deciding their large house that used to be a VRN can now be a place of worship?
A place of worship means a special purpose building that is architecturally designed and particularly adapted for the primary use of conducting religious services on a regular basis.
And then there's also a conditional use.
And there was a, there was a case in Jackson County where someone built a house with 11 bedrooms and a theater and a library, and it had nine bathrooms or whatever. And then after they built it under the, this may sound familiar, under they built it under a, you know, it's just like my house, then they wanted to change it and convert it to a church. And in order to do a church in Jackson County, this is just outside of Ashland, they had to get an exception under the state land use laws. And of course, they said, "Well, you're violating the Red Hupa Religious Liberty Act," whatever. And the court said, "No, it's not a substantial burden on the free exercise of your religion to have to go through a permitting process through the state of Oregon's DLCD exception process." So we can require a process and not be accused of violating that. So I think we can amend the definition to say, well, these things are allowed. We could put them through a conditional use process. I don't think for, if we define it narrowly enough, we'd need to do that, especially if smaller size operate under the radar without affecting the neighborhoods. The only thing that concerns me is the building code.
And I've been working with state officials to address the building code, and apparently under chapter one, there is some flexibility that our building official can identify, but we need to, you know, go through that process. We've never gone through the process because it's never been a permitted or allowed use. So we haven't had anybody ask us for that.
So if we don't go through that type of building code process, are we liable?
No, we would require anybody to at least meet the standards, that's the building code, but there's flexibility for the-
But is it a commercial use?
No, there's flexibility in the building code for places of worship.
The biggest thing is sprinklers and ingress and egress.
And those are the biggest concerns, yeah.
So aren't those, in a way, already addressed? I mean, you talk about a full church on Sunday, this place is prepared to have sprinklers go off with all these people, and then there's four exits.
It depends on when they were built.
Right.
And it also depends on where they're, you know, where are the families or the temporary residents sleeping? If they're sleeping in a classroom with one door in and out, and the emergency exit's 100 feet down the hallway or something, there's a little more concern.
Are there CO detectors and things like that?
Because we haven't looked at the churches. My guess is that most of the churches have sprinkling systems and things like that, but so we don't know because we haven't looked. But my guess is that this will not be a huge issue.
The building code won't be.
Yeah, even to use the community center as a shelter, we would have to put in CO2 detectors or something to deal with, you know, that, hey, this is overnight occupancy. You have to, you know, right now, it's assembly, just like a church during the day, but overnight is different.
Fire alarms, yeah.
Do you have suggested language?
I actually think that the language that would be best utilized for our code throughout in the zones that places of worship are allowed would be the bottom sentence where we, or approved conditional use. And then I think, I agree with Richard, that we add a definition of what an accessory use to a place of worship is. And that's where we can create some parameters of, you know, limitation to that.
Use this statute and then add an allowance for the emergency shelter kind of thing. And hopefully it'll be all, since it's so wrapped in state law, I think it would be defensive.
We would need to define emergency-
Churches aren't charging these people in things like that.
Not only that, though, some of the foundation that are doing this, they aren't getting state grants. So there is state subsidizing of the situation to some extent, so it's really kind of a bizarre situation.
I have to say, it has been a great benefit to our community, churches are doing this.
They are in every community that they do this.
It's been a huge benefit, and we wouldn't even be bringing this up if it had not simply come up on our radar, but it did. It's put the staff in a position where you have to enforce a ordinance without a change to it.
Does anybody have any other questions about this? So the process is you're going to bring this back to us with language?
I'll bring it in a draft ordinance. And what I will do is work with the building code to identify, do we want to give me some parameters on, you know, persons per night, if it's being used as an overnight shelter?
Well, that seems to me to be site-dependent. I mean, on occasion, they could-
Some of these churches are very small.
A lot of people and something-
The funding actually made a difference, too, because of the state funding, they had certain requirements they had to meet, and that's why they were coming to us from the gymnasium, just a big fireproof place, and they thought, "Wow, we could really work with this," you know? But then we'd have to put substructures up inside the building, and they all burned.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it?
I got it.
All right. Do you have any training?
I'm not sure if there's a lot of training.
You want to argue for that?
Any reports and comments? Yes?
I like this format, I think it was very useful, we got a lot of work.
Yes, I do, too. I do use that because I do also like-
And I was giving you guys the handouts earlier, I apologize, I was taking it into the packet.
We'll get better at it, but I think it's far superior to having things stuck in our packet and coming into a public hearing about this. Yeah, so, thank you.
I'd like to see your communication, how you guys interact sitting at a table across from each other.
Patty and I are gonna fight outside.
I'm not leaving, man.
I heard you were sorta.
She would be so mad right now.
Future agenda items.
Future agenda items.
Question, or can we move on?
No, this is not, this is not perfect.
Okay, good, go ahead. Future agenda items at next meeting. So I'm actually gonna jump to next meetings, we are awaiting the application for the villages to try to get that on the schedule. We have our next meeting on Tuesday, April 2nd. I hope to have gotten through the food cart stuff a little further, and maybe we can add a 30-minute work session to continue that discussion. And then you will be able to meet our new senior planner, Anne Marie. And then the second item under number 10, Tuesday-
Is her last name Marie?
Oh, no, Anne Marie's her first name, last name?
Skinner.
Skinner.
Okay.
Kids.
I don't want to watch your comments.
And then, and then Tuesday, April 16th, I will be out of town at the National Planning Conference, so I suppose we-
You're supposed to-
Week after I've got here. So I'd like to ask the commission if we can cancel that meeting.
Oh, whatever. It is like spring break, right?
Your senior planner ran onto the hot seat.
He and I had that conversation right before the meeting started, but-
See? Well, then it's unanimous.
So we can cancel that, we can cancel it.
Perfect. We do have, lucky you, a fifth Tuesday in April, if we want to change the meeting date to be the, I think it's 31st or something.
I don't know where you're talking about.
No, I don't think so. I mean, if you guys really, I know you're interested.
But does that mean, then, that the first week of May, we'll see the villages plan?
I'm waiting to hear from the consultants on that, so.
Have they announced who the developer will be?
No, no.
Do we know that at that time?
At the same time as the rest of the public, yeah.
You'll get no information. They're going to put up the construction sign.
Okay. Have the-
When we get the application?
No, no, it doesn't matter who's going in there for the application. That would create some conflict of interest.
Nothing.
So, sorry, Patty.
Well, no. Yeah, yeah, it's okay. It'll come to me at about 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, so we also will be seeing a land use map amendment coming through the city acquire the square that is within, I'm still learning the names of the parks.
Agnes Creek.
Agnes Creek area, so we'll be redesignating that to open space. And then I've been working with, talking with our GIS analysts, there are some other parks and open space area that need to be cleaned up as well, so we may expand that list to do a larger map amendment through that package instead of just one parcel at a time. But these would all be city-owned properties at this point.
What's the status of the city-owned properties that are for sale?
They're still going through the exclusive negotiating process.
Time, time frame line.
Yeah, well, they've, several of them have had extensions, I think all of them may at this point.
All of them.
Yeah, so they all have a life of at least a year, you know, from when this started.
Oh, nobody has left, or lost interest?
Nobody's walked away yet.
Oh, okay, well, that's good news. Okay. Hey, you gotta look.
Sounds like good news.
Anything else?
No, thank you for a really insightful, thoughtful meeting you guys have tonight. It was a good one. It was?
We're done? Oh, sorry, Sean.
Next week. This might be nice. Retaliation.
Casino.
I didn't have it, I can say anyway.
Okay. Diana brought cookies, grab a cookie, aren't you, Diana? Diana brought them. So, um, you don't have to say that.
Well, a church can provide low-income housing, that's part of being a church.
This state law?
Well, they do provide it, but can they charge, they charge for it?
Then they sell it.
Being a covenant, that runs through the land, whereas like Brown's actually had a affordability covenant, you had to file, if we gave you certain breaks, you can get you reduced inclusion or zoning, you could set the income limit of the people that applied. Generally, you know, you're not allowed to do that, but we did that because we did this negotiated thing. Well, churches appear to be able to do the same thing, to offer low-income housing, and you have to sign an affordability covenant, and it sets a very fair result.
So tax-free?
Our country has a big piece of property.
And I agree with that. I was talking about today as I was walking around because she was asking-
You needed money.
You know where Olivia beat?
Might be an ocean carrying property with one thumb on a Presbyterian church hall.
Well, I guess, you know, I don't think we have any interest in becoming landlords.